I didn't want everything to be funny. I think I'm getting tired of it. It was the funniest thing I've ever seen. They were looking at me like, "Is she okay?"
Oh, everywhere on it, yeah.
Who's house was this?
You never know.
I think I read the story.
Yes.
No hard hat.
We want to bring up some.
Did you say in my office, "I'll ask him and..."
I hate it.
Did you see? I'm on there emailing. Meanwhile, I was gone, I got my longest message from...
Yeah, I heard them.
Basically, right, they basically... This is Moki. It did, and I don't know why, because out of seven messages, she was five of them. One of them was forty-one minutes.
No pun intended.
I missed it. Super voicemail.
Oh, I bet you have. You got their blood boiling.
Seventeen and a couple of sixes and sevens. Oh, yes. Uh, just... Yeah, it's only... The other way is to pay up. You can go and hand it in. That's really the only way we can go, is put that five thousand dollars.
I was the...
Good evening. Welcome to the June twenty-seventh Waschugle City Council Workshop Meeting. Jennifer, which call the world, please.
Councilmember Coeston?
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Here.
Councilmember Morris?
Here.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee?
Here.
Councilmember Russell?
Here.
And Councilmember Delivar?
Present.
Whole gang is here. Uh, we're at that point for public comment. Any members of the public? I do have a card for Mrs. Tweet.
I just wanted to follow up on the issue of the conflicts of interests and some comments that I made to the court. I'll have to send this by email because I don't have property experience today. The reason why I'm coming to you is that the members of your staff in council here is part of the selection process for the mayor of Canis for contract while he was mayor of Canis and employee of the city of Canis. In looking into this information, I came across some quotes from the Colombian which were concerned to me because they don't match with the public record. One of these quotes that's attributed to Paul Dennis, this is what it reads from the Colombian on May tenth. Dennis said he played no role in the three governments planning for the new regional entity. In looking at some of the public meetings that happened, you see in January nineteenth, twenty-ten, that there was a special meeting with Canis, Waschugle, and the port, at which Mayor Dennis asked if there was interest amongst the jurisdictions to partner in a combined effort to improve economic development. And if there was interest, a subgroup should be formed to develop specific interests. And he said there should be no more than two elected officials from each jurisdiction in the newly formed group. So that was January, you kind of picked that off. Then there were the subcommittee meetings in at least February, March, April, and June, at which Mayor Dennis attended at least three of those. And some of your council staff were involved with those subcommittee meetings as well. And then there was a September plan of meeting where Mayor Dennis thanked those in attendance for coming, showed their support, and he hoped, he asked each member, that's Canis, Waschugle, and the port, to identify the need for this, that's the economic development QDA, in their specific budgets. And then he did that. As the mayor of Canis, it's his duty to prepare the budget. And he did prepare the budget and included the fifty thousand for QDA in there. So to say that he had no role in the three governments planning for this entity doesn't jive with the public record. So that's a big concern to me. Then there was another quote that was attributed to Dennis, where he noted he had not attended any meetings in the past year after he realized he might work for the group. That was out of a seventeenth article. He noted he had not attended any meetings in the past year after he realized he might work for the group. So again, this is concerning. If this quote is accurate, evidently he realized a year prior to this that he might work for this group. But did he declare that intention to bid at that time? If he had said to the city of Canis in December, when he prepared this budget and proposed a new fifty thousand for additional, we already had twenty-six to the credit, if he had said, "And by the way, I intend to bid on this contract," I think the citizens of Canis would have taken note and attended the budget hearing and made their concerns known at that time.
Margaret, I do need you to wrap up, please.
Okay, well, I'll be sure to send this to you. And I also found it interesting that the court attorney had never been asked to review the Canis ethics policy. I believe our ethics policy does apply to mayor council, and that the process that was followed is in a violation of our conflicts of interest policy, our ethics policy. I believe there was a strong...
Margaret, I need you to wrap up, please.
And that's, that's it. I'll submit.
Thank you.
I'll submit this by email then, as a follow-up.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to address council? Okay, we're going to head right into some strategic planning. Just to, just to let everybody know, we are going to add a, what'll hopefully be just a quick item on to the agenda a little bit later, prior to Dave's presentation on the memo of understanding with the firefighters' union. We're going to take a quick executive session, just to bring you up to speed on, on some things to do with labor, and then come back in. So no action needed, just some background information. With that, Trevor and Joanne, it's your show.
Yes, we're very excited to give a presentation to you. And I just wanted to clear up a couple things, just for clarity. One is, I thought, I believe that David was going to give an introduction to this.
All right. Thank you, Joanne. My apologies, I'm having an allergy day, so if I break down and sneeze in the middle of it, a brief introduction, my apologies. Anyway, as you recall, at our retreat earlier in the year, we basically chartered ourselves to do a strategic planning process internally, tapping Trevor and Joanne to come off the line and to take this special project on. They've been working diligently. We got started a little bit later than we really wanted to, and I think you'll see that reflected in some of their timelines. Not until, we didn't get really started until the spring. So we are moving along. You also approved a small professional services agreement with organizational consulting to provide some consulting to Trevor and Joanne, and that has already taken place, as well as we got some free support from an institute at the University of Washington, and some, some folks there have provided some support to Trevor and Joanne as well. So I just want to thank you for your support of this process and look forward to the, to the update from Trevor and Joanne.
Thanks, David. First of all, I want to tell you that it's such a privilege to be on this project. It's a huge project, seems bigger and bigger the more we get into it, but it's an exciting challenge, and I couldn't ask for a better partner. I was...
I didn't get to go first.
No, darn. You owe me. Okay. First of all, you'll see on the first slide here, the slogan that was chosen was Waschugle: Mapping the Community's Future Together. And I'm going to ask you, Trevor, to kind of give a background on how that was, how that came about.
Yeah, we started with the opportunity for staff to submit ideas on what a good slogan would be, knowing the context of strategic planning, where Waschugle's been historically, and what staff felt was a strategic plan, not only for the, the city, but for the community as a whole. So we had over a hundred submittals, ranging from a lot of emphasis on Gateway, or Gateway to the Gorge, to mapping, to future, to wind and water, and everything that you typically would see in our city logo. So we wrapped that up and then gave a specific deadline with a top five for staff to basically rank and pick the slogan that they felt was the most appropriate for this special project, which landed at Mapping the Community's Future Together.
And then I would like to ask you to, to be patient with us. We really would like to get through our slide presentation. At the very end, we have a whole time slotted for discussion and your input and your questions. But I wanted to point out that the photos that were chosen for this first slide were purposeful in the fact that we wanted to show some successes of things that have been done in the past. As we get through our slideshow, we'll talk about, look, delving into historic documents over the years, since as far back as we can find, of projects that have started and then halted, and nothing came of them. But we thought it would be exciting to see that even though we continue struggling forward, we are moving forward, and we have accomplished quite a bit. So the next slide is, we wanted to give you an overview of the sixteen things that we are going to address tonight. And we're going to discuss and tell you about the strategic planning team, and the draft goals of the plan, the steps that we've already completed, the public engagement campaign that we've come up with, which has been reviewed by the two entities that David discussed earlier. And they thought that the campaign that we're proposing is an excellent one, although they thought it was quite aggressive for two people to accomplish. And then we'll talk about the project kickoff, when that starts, that we will be evaluating strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges. Sometimes you see this referred to as a SWOT with a T on the end, which, T stands for threats. And we changed that from threats to challenges. We'll discuss the solutions, develop a mission statement, community values, and a vision statement. We'll discuss the action plan, our final reassessment, and then to go through the adoption process, have a celebration, implementation, monitoring, and measuring, which is very important. We have a slide on the timeline, the next steps that we're going to be doing, and then an opportunity for council's discussion. So the first slide is the strategic planning team, and you'll see that that's led by the mayor with David Scott, and then Trevor and I are under those two individuals. And you'll see that there's, was the organi, excuse me, organizational consulting, which is the contract that David alluded to that you approved. And we have met with them, as well as an advisory committee that has not been formed yet, and we'll talk about that further in the slide presentation. And the intern, Ariana Nasib, did you want to talk about, about the intern and kind of introduce her and...
Yes, we had a...
How we came about getting her?
We had a competitive recruitment process, and ended up with the preferred candidate being Ariana. She's a student at the University of Portland, she's going to be a senior this year, double major in communications and Spanish, and a minor in social justice. And she lives in East Vancouver, and chatted a little bit about her experience with Pendleton Woolen Mills and volunteering as a youngster at the Fort Vancouver Parade Days, or special days that they had in Vancouver. So she's very connected with the community, and will be a huge asset to the project.
Although there was quite, there was several candidates that would be excellent to work with, it was exciting that it was someone that was local, as local as we could get being in Vancouver rather than the other side of the river. She also comes from a family that has been in business for several generations here in the Clark County area. Next slide. So these are the anticipated results that the project team has. And we're hoping that the result of this process will be that we will have an outline of the city's overall direction and purpose, or a mission, and preferred future. That we're going to learn what the community desires and what it values. That we're going to find out what the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges are that are facing the city of Waschugle. We're hoping to have long-term objectives, and then also long and short-term strategies to accomplish those objectives. We anticipate that the outcomes will be achievable and measurable, and it will result in an action plan or a roadmap that will be used as a guide to make decisions on, say, your budget, capital projects that you're going to invest in, economic development decisions, that sort of thing. And then, of course, this plan is intended to be incorporated into our comprehensive plan and our capital facility plan updates, and for it to be a living document that needs to be revisited along the way.
I think just to provide a little bit of background with the public works experience, typically we have facility plans or master plans, park comp plans that we update, like on a five-year, typically statute requirement. I think what we've gotten in the habit of is having those collect dust through those five years and not updating it real time when we complete a project, similar to like an E Street or a Kerr Park Trail Development. So bringing all of those facility plans and master plans together within a strategic plan, and not having them siloed out and being walled in between each other. So we look forward to that opportunity.
An example that would be, say that the park's CFP is coming before you, and in there, there's a project, and the project's going to cost a certain amount of money. Well, at the same time, we should also be looking at the transportation CFP, the water CFP, the sewer CFP, and say, okay, well, while we're doing this project, why don't we do the other one as, at the same time? It's more efficient, it could save money. And then when you budget for it, you know that you're budgeting for a project that includes all these elements. So it's, it's trying to coordinate them together. Next slide. So we wanted to talk a little bit about the steps or the things that we've already completed. We've established a process and steps. We've established a timeline, which we'll show you later on. I did want to mention that although we met in January, as David said, we didn't start this process till mid-March. So we're about three to three and a half months into the project. We have determined the expectations of all the department heads. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, first and foremost, the opportunity to learn more about each department specifically. We have met on a weekly basis for a department head meeting, which is usually on the heels of the workshop or city council meeting. But to sit down one-on-one with the department heads and managers within each division and get a better sense of what they deal with on a daily basis was very educational for me. And it gave me a better sense of what each department is dealing with on a daily basis, whether it's emergency services, or finance, or human resources. Have a lot better feel for all the services that we provide as we lay those things out inside of our org charts. So very, very good learning process.
It really was. And a lot of things that came up were common issues among all the departments. And then do you want to talk a little bit about how we're expecting the strategic plan to kind of lead into business plans for each department?
Yes, at this point, we've scratched the surface on individual department business plans, which will support the strategic plan overarching document for the community and for the city, setting out specific, specific goals and specific objectives within the department. And as part of that is performance measures for staff, from department head on down to line staff. So we'll be working on that simultaneous with the public engagement campaign and Phase Two and Three of the strategic plan project.
We have also identified the roles that both Trevor and I will play, and the intern, and our responsibilities and tasks. We've also took quite a bit of time to research and create a historic planning document. It took digging in the basement, doing searches on the computer system, and we ended up with a pretty large notebook, and it's broken into subject. We thought we were completed that, we had, but we keep finding more and more things related to that. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. We've also developed a survey. We've developed a website, which will go live tomorrow. Do you want to talk about what's on that website?
Yes, the PowerPoint, first and foremost, will be on the website, be able to pull that down as a PDF, be a little bit easier capacity-wise. We'll also have an application for those interested in the advisory committee for the project, to be able to fill that out online and submit it. We also will have notification on specific outreach, public engagement outreach efforts that we'll have throughout the public engagement campaign, all the way to early fall, targeting early October.
And of course, we've shared everything that we have so far with the mayor, the administrator, and department heads, and tonight we're sharing with you. So the first step was that we all agreed to plan, as we discussed earlier, in the planning retreat in January, and also when council endorsed this project by appropriating the funds in the budget. And did you have anything to add on that one?
No.
So then step two was to gather all the historical documentation that I was talking about, to kind of find out who are we and where we've been, but also to learn lessons so that we don't repeat the same things that didn't work in the past over and over. Also to come up with a record of any unmet goals that may still be viable today, and to identify accomplishments. Some examples of some of the subjects that came out of the historic documents that I thought still apply today because we're still discussing them. It are, and let me just tell you a little bit about one of the largest groups was back in nineteen eighty-five, and it was an organization called PEOPLE. It meant Promoting Economic Opportunity, Preserving Livable Environment. And it was a partnership between the Chamber of Commerce, the Columbia River Economic Development Council, the cities of Canis, Waschugle, the school districts, IRC, which was the Intergovernmental Mental Resource Center, and the port. And they met for quite a long time, and they actually came up with a list of recommendations. And then there was another group, it was an ad hoc committee that one of the mayors had put together, that included business owners, a council member, and it met from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-one. Between those two groups, I'll just give you the subjects that were discussed with recommendations. Now, the recommendations were never acted on, but the subjects were partnerships with other entities, prioritizing needs, desires, and wants of the community. Let me say that none of these are in priority order. So the city's image, facilities, business, jobs, transportation, infrastructure, parks, staffing, and tourism. Once the, the planning documents are complete, we'll actually probably have them up on the website, too. But if you'd like to come over at any time, you're always welcome. Must say, we're out in the field quite a bit, talking with businesses and industries, and meeting with people. But the, the notebooks there, it's in draft form, you can look through it at any time. Another question and reason we were looking at the historic documents is to say, does the history of Waschugle play any role in what we want to be for the future? An example was, a lot of the older history, historic things, including things that we found at the museum, were the importance of being between two rivers. That was very important for the people that lived here. Is that important to us today? Should we capitalize on that? Should we continue to go that way? The scenic vistas that the city of Waschugle has, is the history of Lewis and Clark important to us for today or the future? And Chinook Indians. And then we also obtained strategic plans from other entities, such as the port, different utilities, and the school districts. And as we get towards the end of the process, we'll be incorporating those into our strategic plan where we can, and to see if there's any way we can support them to be successful and still do it within the role that government has. So the next step was for Trevor and I to develop a public engagement plan, and we included internal and external stakeholder interviews, as well as public stakeholders. The internal stakeholders, our individuals that we interviewed, were the department heads, the mid-managers, and any line staff that a department head recommended, as well as planning commission cemetery park and civil service board members. Although I do need to note, even though this is in the section of things we have completed, it was intended that we would have completed this already, but we backed away because we wanted to make sure that council was the first to hear about it, and these boards would be second. So they are scheduled immediately in the following weeks. And then we have external stakeholder interviews. Now, these are not all the people that are included in the process. These were just people that we wanted to interview one-on-one. We wanted to find out if there's opportunities within their organizations where they were going to have an event that we could go to, that we could participate in, where we'd have an opportunity to meet more public and get feedback. One of the things that Trevor and I decided very early on was that this would be a very robust public engagement campaign, and it would not be the typical three meetings that you, usually a jurisdiction has, where the public comes to a meeting. This was going to be where, for the most part, we were going to them. So we have interviewed the director at the port of Canis, Waschugle, and Trevor, you want to talk about what we're doing through them?
Yes, with the, with the school district?
No, excuse me, with the port. The concert.
Oh, yes, yeah, we'll be attending the concert in August. I think they actually have two different dates, one's in July, and there's another one in August. So we've reserved a booth for that concert down in the port. We're also working through trying to get interviews, either actually with both outgoing superintendent for the school district, as well as incoming, so both Teresa and Dawn, as well as the human resource director, Doug Bright, since we have a lot of dealings with him. So we're still working that as well.
And of course, we're not going to be walking around, talking to people when they're trying to listen to music. We plan on being there before the concert starts and kind of chat with people as they're kind, you know, milling around, waiting for the concert to start. So we've also interviewed, I'm sorry, his name slips my mind, Ross?
Yonick, yeah.
Yes, with the Senior Meals on Wheels and Loaves and Fishes. And we have contacted every single church in the city of Waschugle. Not all of them have responded, but we've contacted everyone and have met with a couple of them. What's kind of exciting about that contact has been, they've allowed us to leave survey boxes there with surveys that we go back once a week and we pick them up. Sorry, I'm signing. And then, and they also are each telling us about the things that they offer the community. I gotta hold my hands down. Offer the community. And it's interesting to see what maybe at the end, when we're done, what needs are not being met in the city of Waschugle, and then what needs are being met? And are we overlapping? And maybe each group could get together and decide amongst themselves that, let's put our effort more in this than the other, so that we're not, or let's get together as partners. We've also interviewed East County Little League, the assisted living facility up in Lookout Ridge. Trev's been trying to get a meeting together with the motocross. We've met with Best Western. We tried to get it with the owner, but it's with the general manager, but he was very forthcoming, and it was an excellent conversation. Do want to say that one of the side benefits of these meetings is that every single person is just thrilled that the city of Waschugle would be interested in what they think and what they feel, and their input. So even if nothing really substantial comes out of the interview, the fact that someone from the city's actually contacted them. Do you want to talk a little bit about when you went down to the industrial park?
Yeah, yeah, it was fun. We're actually part of our, I think it may be our, our next slide, but the public engagement campaign. I think just to highlight the external stakeholder slide, I would say about fifty-fifty, the interviews that have actually been conducted, the other fifty percent we're still chasing. So the ones that have been highly responsive and been available via their schedule, we've already conducted those interviews, but we still have a lot of work to do. So the ones you see here, I would say we've got about half of those completed to date. And we'll be completing those during the public engagement campaign. Yeah, so as part of the public engagement campaign, walk and talk specifically going to physical door of the business within Waschugle. I started, Joanne and I, very, in a complex manner, I guess, split up the city based on Waschugle River Road. So she's on the west side of Waschugle River Road, and I'm on the east side of Waschugle River Road. So I started in the southeast corner in the industrial park, which is where Pillar Plastics, Norwestco, Fatisa Fiber Web, ADS Pipe, all conduct business. So it was refreshing to get out. I should have grabbed a handheld and read some meters while I was out there. So, she's on the west side of Waushego River Road, and I'm on the east side of Waushego River Road. So, I started in the southeast corner in the industrial park, which is where Pillar Plastics, Norwestco, Fatisa Fiber Web, ADS Pipe, all conduct business. So, it was refreshing to get out. I should have grabbed a handheld and read some meters while I was out there, it's been a while since I've read meters, but it was fun to get out and hand off some surveys to those business owners, so. And Joanne has started on the west side, but it's been very refreshing, specifically those individuals that know your face, that it's potentially not a compliance or public works issue when you walk through the door.
Right.
So, that's been, that's been refreshing.
Right.
Thus far.
So, I counted up today, between Trevor and I, we've done 50 walk and talks so far, which means we've either contacted 50 businesses, or 50, well, I shouldn't say that, a total of 50. So, that includes businesses and industries. And so, if you find us not in the office, that's typically where we're at, is out and about, meeting with someone, or we've established a meeting, or we're doing our walk and talks. We've also done surveys, now at the end of our presentation, we'll have a handout of those. That's also going to be on the website. Wanted to mention about the surveys, we have down there three different kinds of surveys. Someone asked about, why aren't you mailing a survey to every single person in the city of Waushego? Although, it's a very common method, all the research that Trevor and I have done is, it's not very fruitful, and it's very expensive, that the one-on-one is more important, and you get a higher percentage of return. So, we're doing a citizen survey on the website, we'll have surveys tonight for anyone in the audience that would be willing to fill it out. We'll have them at all the public meetings, we have, again, I mentioned that we have them in box around town. And, we take them with us to our walk and talks and businesses. We'll also be doing a telephone survey, this is increasingly used, and the responses are said to be as good as face-to-face. And then, a sidewalk survey, we're referring to as an intercept survey. An example of that would be, at least, at once a month, at least once a month, at every Saturday market or farmer's market, there'll be someone representing the strategic planning team, there, just walking around, talking to people. If they're willing to fill out a survey, that's fine. We thought about getting a booth, but really, how many people are going to walk up to, to our booth, that are interested? They want to buy their bread and their flowers. And, and we don't want to be intrusive, but we want to engage people in conversation. So, we're hoping that, that gets a lot of input. I'm out, you want to talk a little bit? I've been flapping my lips a lot.
I think just to follow up on the citizen survey, we got the draft Survey Monkey Survey sent to us from IT Today, and it's very user-friendly, to be able to submit online. What we've communicated in our walk and talks with businesses specifically, and any public that we've encountered, is that it would be live the day after tonight's council workshop. So, we anticipate, a lot of the businesses that we spoke to to date, were very interested in submitting online. The paper application gave them a sense of what we're trying to accomplish with the strategic planning effort, of being able to go in and submit online, and not have to go through the hassle of physically putting it in the mail, or dropping it City Hall, or scanning it and sending it to us via email. We're hoping to get some enhanced participation with that going live tomorrow, and promoting it as well. And to clarify as well, on the telephone survey, it is, from our research, as good as a face-to-face, but very time-consuming. So, we're hoping that with Ariana onboard, she'll be able to fill up any type of downtime, which there isn't very much of, with telephone surveys, to physically go through it, and give an opportunity for the individual to participate further, or just thank them for the information that's been provided. So, we'll be chasing that as well.
And she's going to be using like a reverse directory, so that we can be sure that we're getting a few from each subdivision, and we cover the whole city, rather than not knowing if you're just getting one particular group that lives in one area. So, the next slide. So, we're also going to have coffee conversations. If these are successful, we're, we plan on adding to these. We have a couple more locations and businesses, and we're hoping that the site, that people will participate, and just come and chat with us, share their ideas. We really feel that the citizens' input is what is needed to make this successful. Trevor and I are gathering information, it's not our project, we are gathering information, and taking ourselves completely out of it, our personal opinions, our feelings on anything. So, this is an opportunity for that.
And this is really a starting point, as far as the coffee conversations. In our walk and talks, I've had conversations with Kirin and Espresso, which is Main Street Espresso, 32nd, and Main Street, right next to the tracks there. Mr. Kirin also had conversations with Coffee Corner on E Street, 18th and E Streets. We're hoping that we're able to expand this outreach effort, and capture more feedback.
So, we have established dates for the typical public workshop. And these are the dates and the locations. Now, even though they're the typical public outreach workshops, we want to make them a little more exciting, and we attended, Molly, can you help me with that? You were there, but RTC had put on, what's that kind of planning called?
Scenario planning.
Scenario planning. And so, we've got several ideas from them, as far as what we want to do with those workshops. So, we want to have some interactive things. One of the ideas is to have little paint cans with labels on them, one may say streets, one may say parks, one may say, oh, I don't know.
Emergency services.
Emergency services.
Water quality.
And everybody will be given so many pennies when they come in, and they're to, they're to decide, if, if you were in charge of the budget, and you only had this many pennies, where would you put, where would you invest your pennies? So, we're going to have some interactive things like that, and hopefully, that'll help get people to participate. We'll have easels, we'll have some questions for people to answer, that sort of thing. So, that's phase one, and, phase one, it was pretty much preliminary planning, is what it really was. We've planned what we're going to do, and now, phase two will, is starting July 1, and it will be our project kickoff, and the public engagement campaign, that we discussed with you already. Although, Trevor and I, as we said, started our walk and talks previous to that. So, again, in phase two, we will be conducting the SWAC, which is identifying the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges that the city's going to face, with, with any of the issues that seem to come to the surface during our public engagement. And then, we're hoping that, when we find out what those things are, we'll have the ability to develop solutions. Develop the, the understanding of what we can do about that, if anything, and what happens if we decide to do nothing. And then, step seven, will be, we'll review our previous steps, and the information we obtained. And step eight, we will develop a mission statement, community values, and the vision statement. And there, we give a little description of what we, as the team, see as what a mission statement is, what the community values are, and what a vision statement are. And then, Trevor and I have some really hard work after that's done, and that's to actually develop the plan. And then, phase three begins, and it will be the final reassessment, adopting the strategic plan. And we're hoping that city council will concur, that it's useful document, and that it's needed, and you'll adopt it by a resolution, and then have a little celebration, and then the hard work, actually even harder work, is implementing and monitoring. So, the next is a timeline. Want to talk about this a little bit, Trevor?
Sure. Yeah, as you'll see, there's two separate colors, the blue, which may be hard to read, depending on where you're sitting in the audience. March, April, preliminary planning, phase one, that's starting the project in mid-March. May, outreach, internal and external simultaneous. And then, June, September, which is dotted, public engagement campaign, phase two, which is getting launched July 1. So, as you look at the scale further out, conducting the strength, weakness, opportunities, and challenges, through reevaluating the work, developing mission, community values, and vision, writing the action plan, and draft the strategic plan, the actual roadmap, how to get there, final assessment, and begin adoption process, and then final adoption in May. So, we anticipate close to one year out from where we sit today, for full closeout on the project, to incorporate it into a strategic planning document.
The next steps are, we plan on giving you quarterly updates, every three to four months, and of course, at the retreat that we typically have in January. And with that, we're, to the council discussion section, but there is a couple things that would be really helpful for us, if you could help us with, and that is, are there any other stakeholders that you think you should involve? And, do you have any thoughts, or other thoughts or ideas about the public engagement process?
Paul?
It strikes me that, since the Forest Service is the administrative agency refereeing the scenic area, that Dan Harkenreiter is the area manager for the Forest Service Gorge, Scenic Gorge, and I've got his contact information at home. And, the other one that occurs to me is, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, their hatchery operations will have a lot to do with the possibilities of fishing-based tourism on the Waushego River. And they also are very interested in stream flows, temperatures, and all of those kinds of things also, which are heavily influenced by development. I don't have good contacts for that, but I could find some.
We have made contact locally with Jim Clapp, who manages Steigerwald, but we haven't had specific outreach with USFW. So, we'll, we'll look into that.
Yeah, USFW is going to be the, the wildlife area, but Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife is going to be very concerned about the Waushego River, Gibbon Creek, Camden Creek, and of course, the Columbia River.
Yep.
Other comments? David?
Did you include the Building Industry Association in there?
We have met with developers, and builders, and realtors, but not specifically the BIA, that would, that's a very good suggestion. I do have to tell you, the one builder that agreed to meet with us, you know, we thought we were just going to hear the typical builder conversation about, you know, your impact fees are too high, permits are too high. It was one of the best interviews we've had. It was so excellent. It was so positive, and uplifting, and he was very excited. But yes, we'll add the BIA on there.
I think you can add an industry perspective.
Yes.
A broad view, which might be beneficial.
That's excellent, excellent.
Clark County's economy is currently dependent a great deal upon that particular industry, I think.
Yes. Excellent suggestion.
And what Dave said just popped into my, the Southwest, Washington Contractors Association.
That's Mike Bomar, right?
Yeah, Mike Bomar. And, but also, and his name eludes me at the moment, but I've had a number of good conversations with the president of Pacific Lifestyle Homes.
That's actually, wasn't the president I spoke to, but a manager in that company. That was the company that I said was such an excellent interview.
Other thoughts, comments, suggestions on process? Dave?
On step eight there, the mission statement?
Yes, sir.
An interesting addendum, which might be useful to the council, would be a list of services that we're required to provide by law, and I know you've already worked that up, and those that are desired by, that we've gotten into in the past, whether they're required to, required by law or not.
And of course, you will be part of, as we've talked previously, you'll be part of developing that mission statement.
I'd be delighted to help any way I could.
Well, you're on my list.
Brian?
I've heard you say that you've talked to staff and the public, and are you going to have one-on-one interviews with the council?
Well, actually, we're not, and I'll tell you why. We don't want to influence the outcome of what we're hearing from the public. We want it to be a community plan, and for you, for us to bring you with the community's thinking. In the end, you're the decision-makers, but even David and Sean are not being interviewed. To keep it, I don't know even what the adjective would be, but I hope that answers your question. I hope you're not offended by it either. But it's purposeful that we're going to listen to the community, and bring that information to you as the decision-maker.
Not offended in any way, shape, or form, but I think it's interesting that as many of us as have lived here, as long as we've lived here, right? Thought we would have had some input into it.
Well, you're, you're still going to have input, don't, don't, don't misunderstand that part. And I know, Joanne and Trevor have already reached out to a lot of former council members, mayors, planning commission members, along the line.
Forty-one of them.
And, and pretty much, the thrust of what you were asking them was, you know, basically, what were the better accomplishments, but moreover, what hasn't gotten done? What do you wish you could have done, if you had a magic wand, that you weren't able to do while you were in, or, or those types of things? Joanne and Trevor originally had Dave and I on the list for our first interviews, and we basically said no, because my, my thought process in going through the strategic planning, if it is to be successful, and if it's to be one that isn't just put on the shelves again, and collect dust, is that it needs to be one that is driven from the community's wants, and the community's desires, of what they see Waushego being or becoming. Doesn't have a dang thing to do with what Sean thinks we should be, or Dave, or any of you all. It really has to do with the community itself. Now, once all that information comes back in, and we start putting it through the funnel, you know, there, there may well be some refinements and some things to it, not to necessarily say you don't know what you're thinking, or what you're talking about to the public, but reality also has to go into the planning process. And, you know, not, not knowing what all they're going to come up with through the conversations they're going to have, at some point, we're going to have to be able to say, yes, we believe this is where the community wants us to be, in levels of, whatever comes out of that, and entities in the community, how do we get there? And that's really when the input starts from the council side, is, is being able to help validate that, make sure that we understand it, make sure we understand it in the context of the community, or the government entity that we are, and how we can actually be successful on parts or all of it, in, in getting there, so. There's, they weren't kidding by the time they got down to the end and said this is when, you know, the tougher work starts, because it, it really will be. Well, what are we going to do with that? It's not, I don't think it's either one of our intents, and certainly, hopefully, it's not the council's intent, that, you know, we've taken and, and kind of displaced two high-functioning department heads to go through this process, just to come up with something, go, oh, that's nice, let's go back to where our desk used to be, so.
Molly?
You've probably done this, but I was thinking about the banking industry in East Clark County, they've invested heavily in business here, Riverview, Lackamas, Columbia Credit Union, like Ron Wysocki at Riverview, and no contractors, no building without a bank, so.
Actually, we have just talked with the branch manager at Lackamas, and Columbia Credit Union, and Riverview is on the list, probably happen next week. So, we're learning some very interesting things from the bank.
Yeah.
Carol Lackey at Chase.
Yes, she's, that's my area of town, and I'd probably get to her within two weeks. I'm just now finishing up those businesses down there by, behind the showboat.
Other thoughts, reactions? Do we have them going in the right direction?
Sounds great.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. We're going to hand out some things to you.
Agenda builds, Jim, you've got a bunch of them. Interlocal report for SR 14 Phase Two Conceptual Design.
Two Conceptual Design.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first two agenda items for Public Works kind of go hand in hand, so we're, we'll look at both of those kind of simultaneously. I mean, it has to do with Phase Two Conceptual Design of SR-14, from River Road to Thirty Second, and all points in between. We've talked about 27-screwed extension, and then, and the importance of Phase Two SR-14 to, you know, economic development and the city's future. So, that's what this, these two bills are all about. The intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement is with the Port of Camas, Washougal. And, just getting down to the basics of that, the total for the city of Washougal will be $30,660, and the total for the Port of Camas, Washougal, will be $15,015. And, the scope of work for the, for the professional service agreement will include coordination with Department of Transportation, RTC, and the agencies that will be involved eventually, because that is a state facility, and that's something to keep in mind. But also, some important issues with that as well are, we're going to be looking into right-of-way and possible property that, that could be affected. So, looking at all those different items. But, like I say, these two items go hand in hand. Are there any questions on those first two agenda bills?
Yes.
At this time? I went through it real quickly, but.
On the second one, Jim?
Yes.
On page six of Exhibit A, this is the last, is that the last page there?
Right. Scope of work.
Trying to get the question. It says we're going to get a summary, including maps of the resources, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is that adequate? Is the summary adequate?
Yeah, it, it's actually going to be conceptual design that we'll get back, but we will get a summary as well. So, this conceptual design will, will help us if we want to go out and look for funds. I mean, you know, that's the first step. And then, we can look at funds for some further design later on. But, but this coordination piece, this initial conceptual design will be, like I say, coordinated with Washington Department of Transportation.
Okay. Follow-up on the first one?
Sure.
You going to use eVerify on this?
EVerify, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't kick in. It's only over $100,000. So, we usually, we usually write this into all of our professional service agreements. So, that's why it's in there. But eVerify does not.
We can reduce it to zero. Make the, make the, make the criteria in zero. But I realize that's not where we are now. Thanks very much.
Other questions for Jim?
Okay. Ecology reimbursement agreement.
Yes, this is a cost reimbursement agreement with the Department of Ecology, and it's with HDR and consultants. And, is what this is, is we will be depositing, it's actually a $5,000 security deposit. And then, there is a $20,321 estimated cost of HDR services. And they will look into our water rights and just make sure that our water rights are in place, so that we can develop our, our water system plan, which needs to be updated this year. So, this is an important part of that plan. We have certificates right now, and we need to, we need to get those turned into rights. And, some of the, the scope, the tasks that HDR will be performing, they're obviously going to review existing information and conduct site visits. They're going to look at the potential hydrologic effects on the project, and the hydrologic system, develop reports of examination. So, when we look at maximum day demand, you know, on a hot summer day, and we have the Washougal River, it's real low flow already, and we're pumping all the water out of the lower wellfield. They want to make sure that, you know, it doesn't affect the river or the surface waters in any way. And so, they're going to look at all the, the, the things that go into pumping water out of the lower wellfield, and just make sure that those rights are not more than, than is needed. So, that's, that's it with that. Are there any questions on the cost reimbursement agreement with Department of Ecology? Yes?
Can our new engineer do this work?
No, our new engineer would not be able to perform these functions. This is actually a consulting firm that works directly with the Department of Ecology for water rights specifically. And this is an agreement that kind of puts us to the front of the line to get our water rights squared away with ecology. So, our, our city engineer would not be able to work on this portion.
Okay. Follow-up on the same thing. On the first page of the DOE letter, actually, it's the one page of letter. Talks about cost, doing this on the basis of cost reimbursement. And you and I were talking earlier about whether or not this is a wise way to, to deal with DOE, and does it put us at risk of overruns? And I think you indicated no.
Yeah, it, it shouldn't put us at a risk of an overrun. The price, the price is an estimate. When they say $20,321, that is an estimate. If they do run into other situations that require follow-up and more investigation, that price could go up. They're usually pretty accurate in discussing this with the other agencies and our consulting engineer, Marie Smith and Associates. So, we shouldn't have cost overruns, but there is that possibility.
Okay. But the risk is a little greater than managing it other ways?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Just kind of sobering that Department of Ecology actually has a cashiering department, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Cashier unit. Means they do it a lot. Okay, surplus items.
Yes, so the last agenda item for Public Works is to surplus some enterprise fund items. And, the list is there. We have a computer truck mount, self-contained breathing apparatus, battery charger, wind turbine, fire hydrant diffuser, package booster station, cylinder scale, chemical feed pumps, pipe couplings, pipe repair bands, utility vaults, and some fire hydrants. And this is, recommended action is to set a public hearing for 6:00 PM on July 18, 2011, inviting public comment regarding holding a surplus sale. And since these come out of the enterprise fund, we are required to hold a public hearing. Any question on the surplus items?
How are those actually sold? Are they sold online? Are there specific agencies that have interest in these?
We've done it, we've done it different ways in the past, but we can utilize thepropertyroom.com.
Oh, okay.
That's not required to just be police evidence-type sales. So, we could, we haven't made that determination yet, but we could use that service, or we could hold a sale. But it's less costly to send it to propertyroom.com, and it reaches a bigger market that way as well.
In the past, we've had, you know, the surplus sales down there at operations. You know, we could set one of those up too, if we had enough items.
These are pretty specific to, I mean, they're, they're not something that just,
Yeah.
you know, Joe the handyman is going to want to buy.
There's fire, there's fire hydrants on there.
Yeah. Pipe couplings, you know?
Do you ever know when you might need a utility vault?
Mm-hmm.
I have one of those laying around.
A lot of people buy the hydrants just, you know, for aesthetics, you know, put in your yard, or to paint up.
For their dog.
Yeah, exactly. So, believe it or not.
Any other questions for Jim? Okay. Any, at that point, for public comment again? Anybody in the audience that wants to, when they're due sense to the council? Okay, seeing none, we're going to counsel, if we could, to turn downstairs for hopefully, something for 10 minutes or less?
Yeah.
Hopefully?
Can we bring the sheet with us?
Uh, you certainly can.
Yeah, bring your item.
Uh, Chief, you want to join us? We shall return.